Today is the Board Policy Committee meeting for March 8, 2021. We are, we're going to try to have a slightly shorter meeting than we have been. We're, we're hoping to get everybody out of here by 6:30. So that people can catch a breath. It's, anybody who's been paying attention knows that this is a very high-stress, high-activity period. Today is the Board Policy Committee meeting for March 8, 2021. We're trying to be as efficient and effective as we can. We are, we're going to try to have a slightly shorter meeting than we have been. Especially involving staff. We're hoping to get everybody out of here by 6:30. Which brings me to the first issue that I think we need to talk about today. Given the press a business to reopen schools, and in particular, in light of the shortened, the, the shorter timeframe available to do the preparations because of Governor Brown's announcement last week, there has been a request made to this committee, as well as other committees, board committees, and other work groups, that, to the extent possible, we cancel or postpone meetings with staff who are going to be, going to have to be totally focused on preparing to reopen. So there's been a request that we consider canceling the April, the March 29th meeting. I think it's a reasonable request, so I would, I think we should do it in, in order to serve the best interests of students. Are there any objections by committee members?
No, it makes a lot of sense, given the March 29th date for K5 reopening.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to officially cancel the March 29th Policy Committee meeting, which means that our next meeting will be April 19th. Okay. All right, so let's, let's leap right into the issues at hand. So the first policy we want to talk about today is the Preservation, Maintenance, and Disposition of District Real Property policy. This policy has been out for a second reading, but based on comments from the community that we received, we're going to be considering some amendments today. And Director Brim Edwards circulated proposed amendments that amplify the racial equity, social justice priorities in the policy. And as relates to below-market rent, make financial hardship arising out of extraordinary circumstances one of several criteria, not the threshold criterion. So I think at this point, the, Julia, you distributed some proposed language. Could you walk us through that?
Yeah, and you just, you just did an excellent job of describing in layperson's terms what the legal changes, what the changes in the, not legal, the changes in the policy language do. So in both sections, in Section D under the sale, and also under E, the, under leases, there's just a closer linkage between this policy and our racial equity and social justice goals. And it, you know, in many ways provides sort of equal standing for, especially in D, under the sale of property, of selling property for public purposes, or, which we all agreed was a priority, or that it substantially advances the district's racial equity and social justice goals. And you'll also see that again in E, which is the PPS leases. And as you outlined, the only other change is, and actually, this was something that, I think a few versions ago, the language was, it's returning language to occurrence, a previous state, which was adding this, that in an earlier draft, the, the list of criteria included, you know, a, the financial criteria, and what we've, and then it got, then it got moved up to be a sort of gate, a gatekeeping criteria, and it's been moved back to one, one of several fact, one of several criterias that the board would use in terms of considering, in terms of making findings. And that is it. I think there may be, no, I was gonna say that there's, that's it. So they're quite limited. That's it. And as you mentioned, I, I raised this at the last committee meeting, and then we had a discussion about it, a brief discussion about it when it was first read, and I shared this with the committee members last week. So thank you for the consideration.
Okay, any discussion about this language?
Yeah, I'm, right now, would be opposed to the language unless I can hear, hear more. What this language does is say, we're going to potentially subsidize some programs by lowering their rent, for example. And not on a short-term basis, but on a longer-term basis. And I think if we're going to support programs that are not district programs explicitly, then we should do that in a transparent manner that is basically open to all, and not just programs that we happen to lease to. That gives, that gives some programs a leg up that other deserving programs would not have access to because they don't lease from us. And it's, secondly, you know, that rent money is, I believe, and Dan and, Dan can confirm this, if we're taking that out of a budget line that should be dedicated to, you know, ongoing maintenance and capital improvements for that site, that are, that's part of, a lot of our lease agreements require that. That's gonna have, that's the wrong budget item to use for that. So if we want to go ahead and subsidize, or invest in whatever you want to call it, community programs, let's do that, but let's do that explicitly. And as we've done with a lot of our community partners, we've tied that funding to outcomes that advance student achievement. So if that's where, if we're going to do that, let's, let's do it through that channel, where it's transparent, where it's equitable in terms of broad access to a wide array of programs, as opposed to a rent subsidy that tends to be not very transparent.
Yeah, thanks for raising those issues. You know, I would, I would say this is going to be very transparent because the board has to make an express set of findings. And what could be, and my, my assumption is that those expressed set of findings are in a public meeting with a public action. And to me, that is a very transparent way of indicating, and again, we've set up criteria of indicating, and we've spent months developing the criteria, indicating that we have reviewed the partnership and the program, and made a determination that it would advance our racial equity and social justice goals.
Well, no, what you're suggesting is, I mean, what we had before was, if there's some kind of economic emergency, then we would consider short-term subsidies. This says basically, any one of our, anybody who leases property from us would be open to asking for that. And on not just a short-term basis, but on a long-term basis.
Right, and so there's, so there's,
This is creating a subsidy program for anybody who leases from us.
No, it creates a program in which we would provide, not for anybody. We have to make a determination that it's aligned with our racial equity and social justice goals. So it's not for anyone. And again, I'm going to go back to, there's, you know, several points in which, decision-making points again, that are in the public. And the first would be the express finding, and then the second, any sort of lease agreement, both would have to be approved by the board.
No, and you said that before, I heard it, I understood it. But I don't think you're responding to my other point as well, which is that we have moved very carefully and deliberately, and I think a real positive direction, of tying, when we support community groups, it's tied to some specific outcomes. This kind of subsidy, again, would be open to all to apply for, but there's no tie to any kind of student-related outcomes. And if we're truly focused, and I, as I see, our racial justice policy is laser-focused on student outcomes, to provide a subsidy without that tie is to step backwards in terms of where we've been going.
Yeah, I just disagree because while you can have outcomes, I think we've all agreed, there's outcomes that further our racial equity and social justice goals that are, that are beyond just performance on a map or an S-Back test.
Is, is that what, that's not,
And frankly, like, for example,
That's not, when we, when we make grants to our partners, or through the RFP process, it's not tied to a MAP score, but it is tied to outcomes and services provided.
Would you like to suggest some outcomes that you would want to see? I, I don't, I feel like, I feel like the board has, with this language, the flexibility to, to require that as part of the lease if we feel that's important.
What, why would we do it through a lease arrangement? Why wouldn't we do it through a granting program?
Because there's all different ways in which we support and work with our partners, and a lease is one particular way that we do that. It's, it's one type of asset that we have. You have funding, you have partnership dollars, you have facilities.
But once we do it through a lease, it's, I mean, we already have set up a way to channel money to community programs, where there's a whole open structure, it's an RFP structure, we've got accountability built in that, that, hi Danny, that Danny has, has helped us really move forward on the last couple of years. If we do it through a lease, it's completely outside of that process.
I think this is just another way in which we can support our students who, in many cases, haven't been equitably served by the district. And in a whole host of ways, whether it's with FTE, whether it's with,
I'm saying this for some reason. I really find that the things that Julia has added to this language, for me, do bring us to the racial equity place, and I feel like our, our leases are the place where we can address some of the concerns you've had, Scott. So can you help me understand, like, what it is for you that's not quite cohesive or not quite covering the district's needs in this space?
Sorry, I thought I was clear. Let me say it again, and if you don't,
You might have been clear, it's just my, you know, understanding, so you,
So we, we have programs set up to support our community partners. We have a whole RFP process that's open to everybody. Leases are not open to everybody. We have, and there's not only transparency, but also accountability built into that process, and it's specifically focused on student outcomes. If we give programs a break through their leases, we, under the language you propose, there's no connection to student outcomes or the services that they offer in terms of that accountability piece. And it's, you know, it's through, it's through Dana Shop, basically, which needs all the money it can get to keep those facilities up to date, to live up to our end of the leases, the lease agreements.
So I,
So what I'm saying is,
I mean, I think for me, the question is, the, you know, the, when, if we're using the racial equity lens to make these decisions, isn't that the accountability piece?
Well, you, what do you mean, using the racial equity lens in this process?
Yeah, well, I think,
That's where the rubber meets the road. What specifically do you mean by that?
Yeah.
And my point is, if we are not laser-focused on student outcomes, then we're not using the lens.
Can, can I? So one thing that occurs to me, let's just sort of run with that concept. In order to establish outcome criteria, you would have to set it up so that there would be sufficient time for outcomes to become clear. And it's, I mean, that would add an additional dimension, an additional timeframe onto this that, that might not actually be in play. And, you know, I wonder about adding, I mean, it, I don't know, it just, it, I think it would be very difficult to operationalize as a, as a criterion in, in a real estate transaction.
And precisely, which is why I think real estate is the wrong place to do this. The right place is through the kind of partnership programs that we support, that Danny oversees, because we've got the whole structure set up there.
I think we're, you know, we're, I, this kind of, these kind of changes were brought about by the things that Kairos, you know, the letter that Kairos wrote to the board, that Director Brim Edwards read at the board meeting. And I think for me, what was really hard in that letter was this idea that I thought we'd been fair, and that we had, you know, thought really crucially through these real estate pieces. And I think that that's part of this sense that the world is fair, that I have as a white woman. And I think in talking with Danny and with Liz and with others about this, and about specifically the things that Kairos wrote, it's, we do need to keep our focus on students and student outcomes in the district. And also, we need to think about the fact that we know that we have not served Black students well, and that Kairos is doing something different. And that, you know, no, the results aren't there from Kairos in the way that we would hope, but they're also building and working. And what does justice and equality look like, right? Like, this is all, in some ways, very subjective. And as we think about, like, what historic damage has been done, and how can we support places that are focusing on Black student excellence and developing those programs, it's a bigger, it's a bigger question and a bigger undertaking than just sort of cold policy. And it does get tricky as we get into places of real estate, but I also think that what better place to really enact our values than in spaces like this? So I had a, I had a really hard time with this at first, because I thought we'd done a really good job. And then, as, as I really thought more and more about it, and had people ask really difficult questions, it became more about, like, how are we really living into our values? And I, you know, if, if we give a lease reduction to somebody, that could mean two or three teaching positions, right? And, and so it's hard to think about, like, how do we balance this? And what does equity really look like? But I do think we need to have this language in here, and I support us. I, I see what your instincts are, Director Bailey, and I really appreciate them, to holding us accountable, and not just being like mushy woo-woo feelings. But for me, this is really about equitable justice and about changing the ways we, we look at the world.
So I'm not hearing any specifics there. I'm hearing, this is in line, so somebody help me out here.
I think Danny's got some specifics. I keep cutting her off. Sorry, Danny.
Sorry, no, I apologize. I apologize, I came, came late. Director Bailey, I really appreciate your questions, and I really appreciate everyone's work on this. I think what I'd like to just kind of throw out there is that I think that, well, you are correct, and thank you so much for, for being so laudatory, laudatory about our work with our partners around services. I think what we're hearing from Kairos, and what we could potentially hear from other partners like Kairos, is sort of wanting us to, to sort of lean into partnership through the lens of inclusion. And so that sort of, and this is the part where the rub gets really hard, because I think as an institution, our inclination is to want to do, is to want to do the fix. And, and so that, that I and the DEI work that we're trying to do is about sort of having folks who are closest to injustice be the ones who are making the decision. And so I think particularly when we start to think about the, what, what this would mean for an organization like Kairos means that they're, they're stronger as an organization, they can partner with us better because of the benefit of the lease agreement. And so while I, I, I think that, what I'm hearing you say is wanting some sort of level of accountability, what, where I go to on accountability, particularly when we think about, like, how we're trying to define partnership, particularly with culturally-specific organizations, is that cooked into their, cooked into their membership in the Coalition of Communities of Color, cooked into their bylaws is that they do have a focus that's culturally-specific, and that their accountability as an organization isn't to a set of, of people who are disconnected from the community, but sort of have built-in, sort of like, that, that sort of built-in community accountability. So I think unlike other organizations, a culturally-specific organization cannot benefit either from public or from private means on behalf of the community without showing results to that. And it's, I call it grocery store accountability, it's probably, I probably shouldn't be so callous about that. But I think that that's, when, when we started to set up, lay out the criteria in the first part, is sort of like wanting to make sure that we're, we're thinking about partners in that way. And so I think that maybe bifurcating and thinking about, like, well, we do partnership in, in this way over here, this is really kind of like, is, is sort of saying, like, this is how we're, we're moving through partnership throughout the organization, that we're not compartmentalizing it, that we're sort of making it through. So I, I guess, in terms of the lens that we're putting on this, I think this is where the rubber hits the road around inclusion. I, I do think that there's ways that we've defined culturally-specific organizations as a, as an institution that get to accountability. And I, I would just, I would caution, what I, what I heard from Kairos, and what I heard from other partners, and what I consistently hear is that they want to be, they want to enter into partnership, into deep partnership with PPS. And that they, that the, in addition to sort of like being resourced, they do offer quite a bit of sort of service and, and sort of connection there. So just some food for thought. And I think it's, it's, other jurisdictions throughout the country, and certainly throughout the metro area, have looked at real estate and economic participation as key to those sort of partnership and equity pieces. And, you know, in our plan, we also talk about, sort of like, how do we have equitable, equitable investments throughout, not just in one part of the organization?
So Danny, how is, you defined the, and again, not the term you want to use, grocery store accountability. How does that differ from three or four years ago, before we set up that accountability structure in the RFP process of just saying, we'll grant you money because you're a culturally-specific organization with, without the, the accountability structure that you've helped build, working with our partners?
I think what, I think what it is, is an extension of that accountability by, by sort of, by including in the criteria for who, who can partner in this way in the types of organizations, that the, the pull-through thread is the culturally-specific organization. I still think even, I stand by our redesign of our services, for sure, but I, I still stand by the, that the delineation is, holds up for, for real estate transactions.
You're not making sense to me there. I, I really don't understand what you just said. Because you're saying, give money without an accountability structure is okay, which is what we used to do. So why did we go through this whole process to create that structure?
The redesign of the RSJ partnerships was about a difference, was about aligning services and investment to strategies. And the accountability to the types of organizations was through the definition of culturally-specific organizations. And so I think that that pull-through is in the criteria and the policy about the types of organizations in which we would consider these types of lease and sale agreements.
And, and again, my point isn't about not supporting, it's how we support, through what venue. We've already got a venue set up. Why not use that? Because then it keeps, we're, we're sure that the money is tied to strategies as well as the types of organizations. Because what you're saying is just types of organizations and not strategies.
I think that's a really good question. I think my perspective and the perspective of what I've heard from other organizations is that the, that the, that while they, while they value and appreciate the partnership on the services side, that they, they crave a deeper level of partnership throughout, right?
What, what does that mean?
I think what they're looking for is the district to get closer to that, that place of inclusion, right? So if we're saying that organizations who are closest to the injustice are leading the solutions, one way for them to be able to, be able to, to be able to do that is by sort of having a strong financial, a, a strong financial foundation. And so the credit or the discount that occurs through the policy is a way to invest differently in the organization so that we can get closer to inclusion. I think the, the investment that we make on the service side is a way that we get closer to racial equity in terms of, you know, research, research-driven practices. There's, if, you know, I, I think that public institutions, and I used to work for several, invest in capacity building in, in various ways, in organizations that are, that are implementing their strategies. And so the, it, this, this, you know, sort of, the, the policy, I think, aligns to that type of partnership investment in terms of bolstering their ability to, to, to bring those solutions.
The other thing I'd like to say about this is, the reality is, racism runs through real estate policies all, all across the US. And it particularly has here in Portland. And so yes, And so yes, like, real estate's been used to keep people of color out of certain neighborhoods and real estate policy and real estate prices. And when I look at this, you know, the fact that in this policy, we're giving a preference in the sales to public entities. And like, those public entities were like PPS, an entity, an entity that in many ways used real estate and where we invested and where we didn't, in ways that further divided the community along race and that led to inequalities. And I look at, you know, where the schools have been closed or just a whole host of issues. Real estate has been a weapon in many ways to, against community of, communities of color. And so, you know, this is the reverse in that it's using it to, I think, advance our priorities. And when we first got on the board and our very first board meeting in July of 2017 as the new board, we had a group of individuals that came and asked us to give consideration to allow students to return to Albina, to the historic black neighborhood. And, you know, that was another way in which I, and the board spent time working on that. So as to the staff, and eventually we set aside allocations of slots in schools. And to, to me, that's, that was just another, another way in which we use the racial equity lens and some sort of, and, and a policy in which to advance and address historic inequities in our district. So to me, real estate is just one other way, but it's usually been a, you know, a weapon used against communities of color to keep, keep, either keep them out or keep them in. So I, to me, I think it's like totally appropriate and fits with a lot of the other conversations we've been having about Albina and that we had in the last school bond measure.
Well, we can agree to disagree and move on from there.
Okay. Can I maybe make a suggestion that would, might partially respond to this? A bit different, but, but I think it's connected. I mean, I, I hear, I, I hear about the, our stated commitment to racial equity and social justice that we need to really follow through on. And, and I personally, I, I think this language is, I, I like this new language a lot. What did occur to me as I was reading this is that if we look at the list of criteria, D, the number D, is that the other entity has to be, has to have an official connection to the district or its enrolled students or students expected to enroll in PPS. And I think it's important to have, to reinforce the notion that what we're actually thinking about and talking about are entities that, who may be leasing a building, but who are kind of engaged in, in similar kinds of educational activities that would benefit our students. So it occurred to me that perhaps we might want to make this as the threshold criterion.
I'm sorry, which one?
D, that you have to have an official connection to the.
In section E. So one D.
Yes, it's under PPS leases. It's, it's the same list. It's D. And what occurred to me was, it is theoretically possible. I, I don't think this is necessarily the case currently. But it's theoretically possible that we could be leasing a building to, for example, a for-profit organization, a for-profit company that isn't actually providing direct services to PPS students or potential students. But it, you know, for whatever reason, they may be suffering business losses and they may want to seek a lower, a lower rate for the lease. I, I think that would fall outside of how we generally think about the, the RSJ lens in our mission.
So you're saying that, that, that sort of the gateway would be, they'd have to, they'd have to pass through that gate and be somehow officially connected to like our mission and our work. And then, then you'd have to have also the other criteria?
Yeah. Or, or then you could have, because these criteria are listed as and/or. So you don't have to have all of them. You can have any of them. But it does occur to me that I, for, for me, I, I think a threshold for me would be that this is an entity that has some official connection to PPS or its students. So for example, I'm going to throw this out there and, you know, this is, this is a hypothetical example. The Meek Building will at some point be empty when we open the MPG Building and, and unify the, the Alliance Program. There's a, there's a, there's an auto shop there. You know, theoretically, if we, we, we could decide to lease it to a car mechanic, which, you know, it's better than leaving a building empty, but it's not exactly, you know, presumably fulfilling the educational mission. And I would be much less inclined to give a below market rate lease to something like that. So that's, that's my proposal. I'm sorry to bring it to the, to the committee so late in the game. To be perfectly honest, this occurred to me this afternoon when I looked at this policy for the, the ninth time. Anyway.
All right, Ellie, do you want, do you have a point of view? Sorry.
I, I get, I get what you're saying, Rita, but I, I don't think it's necessary, given the and/or statements. And I think Scott, just reflecting more on what you were saying, I think you're really trying to hold us accountable to make sure that we're, we're using our resources wisely and having us be really good stewards of what we have. And I totally, I finally totally get what you're saying because my headache is going away. So I have a pollen headache. I don't know if anybody else gets those, but it makes me a little foggy. But I, I really appreciate the perspective you brought. Julia, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I, to me, I think it's, I guess I kind of just, well, that's not what, what it said. I just kind of assumed that was kind of a threshold filter, but we did actually make it like an equal, equal criteria that you could have actually not had that and still have said you met some of the criteria. So I'm, I, I think that's a, you know, to, to me, a, an adjustment and a recommended change that I think would actually make it stronger.
Okay, so.
I would, I would support, I would support your amendment.
Okay. So I think we've got two things on the table here. So let's take them sort of one by one. Let's take the overall. Now, let me, let, let's do it, let's do it in reverse order. Do, I'd like to take a vote on whether we want to make this, what is now section D, whether we want to put that up above and make it a gateway criterion, a threshold criterion for eligibility for below market rent. Do we have, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no.
I said yes, but I didn't unmute in time.
Okay. Okay, opposed? Scott, you haven't voted.
Oh, yeah, I had a thumbs up. I also was voting, muting.
Sorry, I can't see everybody at the same time. So, okay.
And our student rep? Oh, not, doesn't vote, correct?
Well, but, but do you have any comments?
I mean, I totally agree with it. I mean, I think it's our responsibility as an educational institution to kind, to educate students. So it makes sense to include that.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to look to Liz for a moment. Can we just make this adjustment? Can we move it up to the previous, so to the heading paragraph? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so. So now let's do the over, all of the language changes in this current draft as amended. All in favor, say yes.
Yes, recommend it to the full board?
To recommend it to the full board, yes.
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 Not?
No.
Okay. And any comments from the student representative? Okay. Okay, so. So I think we have resolved the, the language, the amendments. And I, I'm going to look to Liz again, but it seems to me that these are, the, these amendments have gotten quite a lot of public airing at both the committee level and the full board level. So I would request that we be able to, to take the vote as a full board to adopt or not the policy without having to go back through a first reading. Is that justified?
We, the board can make that decision under the policy on policies. We also have drafted, we have, we, we tried to anticipate, we knew that Julia's amendments were coming. And we have drafted a resolution and we will hustle to get things posted tonight. I think we will circulate to the full committee, the draft language. And if it needs to be tweaked, I think the best place to do that then is at the full meeting. We're just going to run out of time to get it on the agenda for tomorrow. But because this has been around for a long time and there are multiple requests waiting to be processed that have been for, for many months. We, we have teed this up with a procedural path that if the board so chooses, can vote finally tomorrow.
I appreciate that streamlining, Liz, but I do have to say, one of my favorite things is when we do things like have a third first reading.
Thing is, I think we, I think we should be comfortable with that because throughout the process, we, it's not like we've had a barrage of public comment in, in opposition to like, for example, that text, part of the text, Rita, that you said. So, I mean, it'd be one thing if we'd had a bunch of comment against something and then at the last minute, put something contrary to, you know, that in there, into the, contrary to the public comment in there. So to me, I, I, in, in some ways, in some, maybe we should be cognizant of whether our assumptions, but the fact that I think we're on the right track because we haven't had a lot of comment in contrary. And to me, I would anticipate that your amendment would, people would be, that's an intuitive change.
So I, I mean, I would say the, the other thing is, at least for this section, the criteria, we actually have had a consistent set of criteria. They've just been, you know, sort of moved around a little bit at times. So, okay, so I guess Liz, Ellie and I, we may need to talk offline about any particular language that's going to be required tomorrow at the board meeting prior to voting on this. And, okay, just to, I need to know if I need to say stuff. And if so.
We can help, we can help with that.
Director Moore, I have one last question, real quick, sorry.
Go ahead.
Did we check back in with Kairos PDX if this language addresses their concerns?
It's been shared with them.
And. They have a response to that sharing, Julia?
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, that it, it seemed to address the concerns that were, that, that had been, that they had raised. As people may recall, their letter was not, it was not specific to specific language. And so I, I did send the, the language to them and after I'd sent it to the committee.
Okay.
Process question, so tomorrow. Do we have to amend it at the meeting or? Okay. So there'd be two amendments?
Or one collection of amendments. I mean, it, we can break it out if needed, but if there is a, I think there also can be a consolidated vote on the amendments that have come out of this meeting.
Scott, would you prefer them to be separate if you were yes on one and no on another as a courtesy?
I'll, I'll just voice my concerns and make it clear what I agree with and what I don't.
Okay. And if you think through that and you want to handle differently, Director Bailey, happy to do.
No, I'm good. I can count. And going, going to one vote is fine. No problem there.
Okay. Okay, good. So we, let's move on to the next. So let me ask a housekeeping question. I, I'm hoping that we can finish this meeting by 6:30, which is half an hour less than our normal seven. So how do we feel about cutting it down to just one break during this meeting?
I'm sorry, having it down to what?
One break. I mean, I've usually been giving, you know, one break every hour.
That's the only reason I come to these meetings.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
When I, when I chair meetings, I only give one break every 90 minutes. So I'm much meaner than you are. So I'm okay with only having one break.
I don't have three breaks, as you may recall.
Acceding to the will of the group, so. Anyway, okay, all right. So let's move on to the next policy, which is the formal public complaints policy. And so we're, we're returning to this policy, which has been, which we've been considering for a few months, I think. And we had paused in order to, to get information about survey results of families that had experienced the complaint process. And we've gotten as a committee, survey response details that were anonymized for 2018 on. And the 2014, 2014 to 2018, or 2014 to 17, I guess, are, are still forthcoming. But the critical thing is that the information we currently have applies to the policy, the policy regime that exists under the current policy. So if, those of you taking notes at home, the board considered the complaint policy in 2017 and. considered the complaint policy in 2017 and finalized the current policy version in spring of 2018. So the survey results we have net, in hand, are, um, apply to the, the system as it, as it exists under the current policy. And I guess one other, well, okay, so, uh, the, there is a work group that has been, um, working, sort of off camera, um, i- in between the committee meetings, to, to hammer out some issues that have emerged, and, uh, the work group members are, uh, Director Brim Edwards and Director Bailey, and, I would like to ask them to bring the rest of the committee up to speed on what you've been doing in the interim.
Absolutely, I think you're gonna get two versions.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You're heard just fine, Frida.
Okay, I, I think it was my cat hitting my keyboard, sorry.
Blame, blame Bernie.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, Scott and I, um, had a little bit of difference of, um, opinion. We had, we had a long committee meeting. And, you know, I, and again, I don't think there's anything wrong with having more than one perspective, um, because we all bring sort of different experiences. I, um, was, I, I had misread the survey results, um, the first time around, and I actually thought they were way, way better than, um, than they actually were, and then when I reread the columns, it's like, it's actually pretty shocking about how, you know, um, how unsatisfied people felt about whether they felt heard or they were able to, you know, be kept informed, um, of, of the, you know, procedures, or whether it was fair, um, whether the length of time was reasonable. And so that led to a pretty long discussion that, of, Scott and I, um, about, uh, what, the, the relevance of the survey. And what, what did it mean? And from my perspective, and I know Scott will provide his, uh, from my perspective, just given these outcomes, the natural thing to do was, hey, we have, we, we're changing the policy. We have some, um, pretty direct feedback, um, about the, um, about the, the process, and there's sort of two things you could do about it. You could either do a crosswalk of, are we changing things in the policy to address that, because we ask them in the context of that? Or are there gonna be process things that, um, sorry, um, are there gonna be process things that are going to be addressed, and, um, I, I'm con, I'm concerned with moving ahead with the changes in the policy for first and second reading with data like this, if we can't say, um, you know, we got feedback and we're taking steps to address it, um, either, again, whether it's through the policy or through the, this is how we're changing our process. So that from my perspective, I was like, oh, new information, let's, you know, take a deeper dive into it. Because if we ask people's opinion and then just ignore it, um, or what their experience was, or appear to ignore it, if there's not any sort of link to changes we're making, then it's not really, it doesn't, to me, doesn't feel very authentic, and it feels like, well, we're not gonna actually change these numbers, which are pretty, pretty poor in terms of what people feel about our complaint process, the process and the fairness of it. So, it was, it was a good discussion, but we kinda had two different points, different points of view.
So, yeah, and, and, and there was overlap, also. So now that we have, um, as of this morning, and thanks, is Mary still here? There you are. We have the results, the process, and also with dates, so that we know which ones came in over the last couple of years as opposed to earlier ones. It was a little easier to see, or, or to ask the question, was there, were there issues that were relevant to the policy as opposed to the, enactment of the policy that were brought up in the survey? There's also a question of, well, I mean, we, we should treat this as anecdotal and not a, you know, kind of scientific random sample survey, but anecdotes are data. So they're, they're a valid piece of data, but they are, this isn't, shouldn't be viewed as, this is what complainants gave us feedback, this is what some complainants gave us feedback. Most of what I saw there, uh, was issues about how people were treated. I wasn't respected, nobody listened to me, all I got was a crappy email. And it was much more about the implementation of the process as opposed to policy. And considering that we're about to start a whole new process and way of staffing complaints starting in the fall, my, my question is, and again, uh, th- this is a dialogue or a trialogue or whatever, a whole discussion. My question is, is there, um, is there anything in that data that said, wow, the policy really needs to be fixed here? And the, the one possible area, and it is actually something you brought up, Julia, is there was timeliness of response, but I, I think it wa, it looked like what it was is, what do you think was the, it, it looked like a, um, a multiple choice response, canned response, and so it was hard to understand what exactly was meant by it, uh, but let me get the exact wording.
Oh, we also talked about, while you're looking, looking for the exact wording, we also talked about whether, and this hadn't occurred to me, of whether uh, part of the frustration that people have is that this multi-step process, and it was sort of an aha moment for me, that's like, that second review is not required. And that, you know, that would require, you know, we nail it the first time, so you don't get a do-over or a mulligan, um, but that one of the things that may frustrate people is like, we, you know, the district ruled against you, and then when you appeal it, like, no surprise, often it's, you get the second ruling, and then you go, against you, and then you go to the, to the board, so maybe one of the, the things that would make it less frustrating and expedite it is that you, uh, because that's, that's not a requirement by law, um, but that you have a, you know, one level of review, and then if somebody wants to appeal it, it goes to the board, but you don't have this multiple staff and, and also like a staff efficiency, um, standpoint.
Right, so, uh, timeliness of formal complaint process, was the response to better address formal complaints, what areas need the most improvement, select choice. So that was one of the, the canned options. So my, and again, we didn't have this data when we were talking, and we got into this, um, multiple perspectives, trying to talk this over. And my question was, okay, I thought the, I thought this was, process was about tweaking the policy as opposed to a wholesale look. Uh, and if so, to, uh, to look at eliminating step two, uh, to me would be substantive. And when we were talking over, Liz said, yeah, if we, if we're gonna consider that, then we should start over with a public process. And that would mean we wouldn't move on this policy until the fall. I think that's what you said, or am I, uh?
I, I, I think there's a choice to be made about whether to do it now or in the fall. I'm not sure it's contingent upon the two-step or three-step.
So.
You could make, you could, I think you could decide that you've received input through the survey process that decide to shrink the number of steps, and you could do that now without further engagement, or you could decide you wanted to wait. I mean, I think both are principal decisions, but.
So, so since the meeting, given that we have some, at least some specific, something to do with the timeliness of the process. And again, I'm not sure if that was timeliness in staff getting back to you about it, which is one issue, versus the, it's a month, okay, I'm gonna appeal, that's another month. Okay, I'm gonna appeal to the board, that's another month, and then something happens, so it gets dragged out. And, you know, pretty soon, your kid's out of school. So given that, and given, um, and Julie and I think both agreed, why are we doing the step two? And, and I think my experience with step two is staff pretty much saying what staff said in step one, and very rarely seeing anything of substance added to that. And then.
I think that's often true. I would, I would just also say that sometimes what happens in the process, I'm not advocating, I'm just sharing information, is that in the appeal, additional information comes out. Right, so it does, it does allow for more back and forth, sometimes between the families complaining. It also adds time and frustration. It does both of those things sometimes, so.
But it, I mean, does that come out in the first administrative oversight or in the second? And if it comes out in the second, why couldn't it come out in the first?
Yeah, it, it comes out in both. I mean, I think every round gives you, gives more, um, this is what I really meant, and now that you said this, you, you, I need to clarify that what I meant was something else or something similar. I mean, it, it's a human process, it's not a judicial process, and so it will have those components, no matter how many steps you have. But in, in fairness to some of the back and forth, again, I'm not, I'm not advocating in one direction or the other, just giving color to the experience.
Yeah, I just, um, to me, that's, that's more about the quality of the investigation. The, I, I guess, the empathy of the investigator, as opposed to, oh, well, maybe we should add a fourth step. Also, some parts.
Actually, Division 22 was letting you out of court.
Uh, I don't think so. So if we can take a step out, and if we can act on this now and say, hey, we got survey feedback, it said this, our experience is this, why not just cut it out now? I'm, I'm good.
One, could I have the survey results?
Mary, you got, uh?
Yeah, actually, um, Jackson, one of them, um, there, it should be posted a couple, um, meetings ago, was the, um, the, the summary, and then what Mary sent today was the raw data. But if, um, this should be already posted, and I don't know, Roseanne, if you remember what meeting it is? It was, that was, it was posted.
I feel like it was last meeting, or no, two meetings before, I think it was posted, but I can share that. I can also send it to you, Jackson.
I, I already have that. I wanted the 2018 present.
Yeah, Jackson, apologies, you weren't CC'd on, or a part of the original.
Be, because those, wh- when we surveyed parents, I don't think we told them that it was, um, it might be posted on a website, so we did not post that document. It's just a disaggregation.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I get that part of it. I, I'm talking about the email today.
Me too.
Because I came today, I haven't had a chance to read it, so, um, I appreciate receiving it, but I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah. 4:30 was my first look, so, yeah. So, um, so I, I think, uh, I think if we want to, we could consider eliminating that second step. Uh, there's still some other cleanup, uh, of language to do. Number 14. Got some suggested rewrite for that.
So can I, um, so it sounds like we have a couple of things on the table. If, if I've heard correctly, so one question is, do we, are, are we considering this round? Addressing, because if you remember, way back when, this first came to the committee because staff had wanted some, um, pretty discreet technical fixes that were relatively minor, um, in the larger scheme of things, but significant, significant enough that staff over the last couple of years has noticed that, you know, these things needed to be different. So there's that. Since we were looking at the policy anyway, you know, our discussions have gotten, you know, progressively broader. And, and I think what's, what's being suggested right now is, potentially opening it up, opening the discussion up significantly more than we had anticipated. To include, um, maybe changing the, changing the process by cutting out one-third of the steps, um, which is pretty significant. And, um, I think it's also important to note, a- as I understand it, um, staff have, um, concluded, long since concluded, that the, um, implementation of the policy, the, the process that is experienced by families, um, needed some improvement, and that they have been working on designing those improvements over the last, I don't know, year, six months, however long it's been. And that, um, a redesigned process, uh, is scheduled to be implemented in the fall. Do I have the, the timeframe right? Okay, so, um, I think one of the, one of the questions that the data we have, the survey data, um, poses is, how much of the unhappiness that has been expressed is related to the policy itself as opposed to the implementation of the policy? So are, are we talking about, um, needing to substantially revamp the, the policy language and the, and the structure of the complaint process that's codified in the policy? Or is this potentially something that, um, could be addressed in, in this redesigned implementation process? Because if it's process, w- we may not need to do the substantial policy review. We may still want to, but that's a separate question. So it seems to me, we, we've got some threshold questions here. Do we want to, how urgent is it that the, um, initial technical fixes that were brought to the board actually happen this year?
I don't, I don't think there is, uh, that they are of that level of urgency.
Okay, we talked, we talked about that in our, um, work group, uh, meeting, and the, the sense was that they were things that, um, in, in the interim, we could, that, that there's the authority to go ahead and, go ahead and do, it's just this, the sense of they'd be helpful to have in policy. Like whenever the policy has changed. I mean, my, my view is, now that we surveyed everybody, um, and we, I think, instead of revisiting, like, should we have surveyed people? What questions do we ask? That sort of thing. Um, do we, you know, like, should have we shared the policy changes with them? Should we have shared the policy with them? That, that's sort of water under the bridge. Um, but that, now that we do have some data, I think it's better to wait versus moving ahead with, um, a policy that could be perceived as, they're just ignoring like what we told them because they didn't make any changes. So it really seems like whatever those things that staff are thinking need to be changed really should travel as a complimentary, um, package of like, he- here's what we've heard. And based on that, here, you know, based on what we've heard from both participants and from the staff side, here are like both a package of policy changes and process changes.
I do, I do think we've headed down a path of framing the initial work as simply staff technical fixes. And I think the draft you have before that, however that started, is far more than that. It included rewriting a preamble that came at the committee's request. Let me not matter here or there, but the, the, the pending amendments here have come from a lot of sources and represent changes that go in both directions, I think, in terms of some benefit. I mean, just, just to clarify what I meant, I don't know what I actually said at this point. But what I meant was, what we have here, the current draft is, um, i- includes quite, quite a few changes. None of the changes address the, the essential structure of the complaint process. So we still have three steps. But, but aside from that, we, we've made quite a few changes, s- some of which are more significant than others. Um, but some of them, I think, kind of are significant. But I just want to remind everybody that the thing that brought this policy to this committee in, I don't know, August, I guess, um, whenever it was, many months ago, w- was that staff had identified some, s- some fixes that, um, that they thought were important to make. And then once we, w- once we started looking at the policy, then, you know, opened the door to all kinds of other things. So my question was, you know, if we, if we pause on this, is that going to cause problems because we haven't addressed the fixes that were the, the, the precipitating event that brought this before the committee? I, I don't think it brings to a great, w- we can continue to process formal complaints as they come in, under the existing policy. Okay. Okay, so, um, so I guess the question is, well, before I get to the question, if we decide to, to engage in more, um, public engagement, however that would look. Or if and/or, um, we decide to take another look at the structure of the complaint process. I think the committee should be aware that that means we would, w- we would be tabling this policy more than likely for the duration of this academic year. And probably would not be able to continue any additional work until probably the fall. So.
I mean, I think, to, to me, if you, if we can't make a case that we've addressed some of these issues with this data, I, I think it's better, I think it's better to wait. And I actually think also, we, one of the thing we could do is like, hey, we have data. And if staff do believe there's things that can be changed that would address this, it's like, great, let's, we've got a baseline. Let's get, get the, the things that don't require any sort of policy change happening to, and so when we go back to the policy that we're able to say, look at these, look, here's the things that we talked about that we're changing in practice. And here's, you know, we believe this will address our crosswalk to these issues that are raised. I mean, here's like one of them is like, the length of time it took to receive a decision was reasonable. Seventy-four percent strongly or somewhat disagree. Now, one of the things I do think is that when we change the policy and made it compliant with state law is like, actually by state law, our decisions are timely, right? Like, we're not running through a bunch of deadlines. But clearly, what state law thinks is timely, what our complainants think is timely. So maybe part of the process is to explain, like, at the very beginning, like, you are entering a formal process. And, you know, here's, under a normal timeframe, you're going to get an answer in three months. And so all of a sudden, the response is, it was a timely response because they told me it was going to be three months and that's what it was. But right now, like I say, I'm somewhat ironic because I don't think any of our decisions have been late. But people must not know what the timeframe is. And so it doesn't seem timely. But it's like, hey, if you want an answer in two weeks, don't get involved in this process.
Sorry, I was gonna say Liz, when someone makes a formal complaint, there's an urgency. There, there's a conflict, an issue they want resolved. So they'd like it resolved sooner rather than later. So I think that that's a hundred percent correct, Julia. Sorry, Liz, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just trying to tie that feedback to the policy, right? So the policy does, maybe not in a summary fashion at the front end, which may be different than outside the policy communications. But the policy does say, here's what it will, how long it will take. And I think the AD does as well. So that, so the ninety days is set out in there. I, what I think I hear you describing, but I want to make sure I'm not presuming, is that that's a change in a communication and an experience issue, not necessarily a policy issue. And then I think what I hear you saying is you don't want to make any policy changes until the experience work has been done. Well, that, is that accurate or not?
Cause I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, if the reality is, like, we don't have time to go back and do a bunch of more work on the, on the policy right now, that doesn't mean that two community agents or, I, I don't know what their formal title-
I don't know their title either, but-
Can't be hired, or we couldn't do something like when you file a complaint to say, you filed a complaint on this day, um, under, under state law and the formal complaint process, you may not get a decision until, you know, March thirty-first.
Totally agree.
So you don't have to go back to the complaint policy and like, you know, look at all that.
Yeah, we're not going to stop the hiring process for these positions. We are not going to stop restructuring when the chief of staff position is filled and figuring out where, we are not going to stop those, those things. But I, what I'm trying to do is connect those change, things to the policy language and figuring out where the crosswalk is and how translating what I'm hearing from the committee members about the timing on that. Um, let me, let me bring up another issue. So if, if what, I mean, changes are going to be happening, right? People are being, positions have been created, people are being hired. There's a recognition that, you know, the, the way complaints have been processed could be improved. And, you know, planning has gone on. It will presumably, um, take a fair amount of time for any of those changes to, um, to actually play out. So if what you're thinking, um, collectively, the board, um, the committee, you know, if you're thinking that we should hold off on making any changes to the policy until we get more data, you're not talking about next fall, you're talking about a year from next fall. Are you willing to put off making any changes in the policy for almost a year and a half? Or put another way, are the changes that are represented by this draft, are they better than just keeping the current policy? For, for the, you know, for the next year, year and a half? Because you can, you know, a year and a half from now, the board, you know, a future policy committee, uh, can take another look at this, um, policy and make changes then.
So you're coming, kind of coming down, you're summarizing our meeting the other day.
Yeah, exactly.
Where I, where I felt that, where I kind of came as like-
Or, is this a great minds think alike thing, or is this crazy minds think alike?
No, I think people who've been deep into the process and like, see, like the, there's, there's, you know, pluses and minuses with each of the, the paths forward.
Yep.
So can I, um, so let me suggest a path forward. And then you guys can shoot it down. Let's say that the feedback we got through the survey qualifies as sufficient for us to say, okay, step two, gone. Before doing that, I would want to get some feedback from the people who have been involved in that. Ju- just to, or, or maybe Liz and Mary are deep enough to say, yeah, you know, we can go either way and that way is as good as any, or maybe even, uh, yeah, that might be an improvement in the process. But I, I'm not hearing either of you, for example, say, no, 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 no. So we could make that tweak in this process right now, or well, tweak. Make that major change in the process right now. Clean up a little bit more of the language that needs to be cleaned up. And we're good to go right now. Job done. To address Julia's point, hey, we listened to, we listened to the feedback and saw this will help with timeliness. Uh, or at least one part of timeliness. And our administration has listened to the feedback and, and is saying, we're rolling out all these different ways of doing things.
You mean the step, take, remove the step two?
Yeah, room, so remove step two, uh, finish, finish tweaking the language. And let's get this thing done.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back a little. And, and, and just to be clear, I'm completely agnostic on this. I, I can be completely persuaded either way. Um, but let me just throw this out.
Obviously, I didn't persuade you, so.
No, you didn't. Because what occurs to me is, you know, it's now March eighth. W- we're running out of daylight for the school year. And, um, in order to actually bring this policy, you know, given the way we work, nothing happens overnight. So we would have to be getting input from staff about what the implications of getting rid of step two in this process would be. And the staff who would have to be responding to that information request are precisely the staff who are going to be most overwhelmed by the current reality. I mean, we're talking about, you're going to have to reach out to principals. We're going to have to reach out to the senior direct, the area directors. We're going to have to be reaching, you know, I, I mean, if we're really going to do this, because this is not an insignificant change.
It's not, it's not principals. It's, it's senior directors. They're the ones who do the step two. Correct?
It really depends. I mean, they, they do step one or step two sometimes, depending on the complaint and the-
Okay, but if you look at step two, it's, I can't think of a time when it wasn't a senior, you know, cabinet member.
Yes, S L T generally does the step two.
Right.
Not senior directors.
So, uh, Rita, I would argue that by eliminating that step two, we're saving them time. And then, oh my God, do I have to go through this again?
I would like to hear that from staff, not our speculation.
To me, the bigger, your question is, I'm going to assume, and you're right, Rita, we should check with staff. But I'm going to assume the party we should really check with are like, um, the, the complainants versus this, because it's in some ways rem- removing sort of one uh, ability to appeals, you know, taking a layer out. Now, I would think it would remove some frustration, but like, I, I mean, I'm just making that assumption. I mean, because people do always have the, people do always have, I believe, the right to go straight to O D E at a certain point anyway.
On certain types of claims, but if through the Division twenty-two process, they have to generally start at the district. And when they exhaust, they get to the final decision as defined within those parameters, then they go to OD.
And it's, the, the final decision maker is the board.
As defined in our policy, it need not be.
Okay, because just along that thread, so, um, if somebody, like, their original objective is to go to O D E, because that's an allowed path. I mean, in some ways, we're torturing everybody by making them go through the, the three steps. Because it's just like, I'm just doing this so I can get my ticket to go to O D E.
Very, in the last three years, very few have gone to O D E, that, that generally, that the process concludes at some step in the internal process.
We wear him down, Julia, we wear him down.
Hey, I've been part of the process, so.
We constructively resolve issues in an appropriate manner.
Right, so, um, I mean, Julia, it's, it's not a bad question to ask people. Hey, how was that step two? But loo- looking at, at the survey responses at least, they were almost across the board. Cynical, badly burned. I put my kid in a private school because I just couldn't take it anymore.
The survey?
What?
You're reading from the survey or just making that up?
No, I'm reading from the survey. The last, column V is, is a free form response. And it's, it's, they're, they're not happy campers. There may be happy campers out there. Uh, they just didn't respond to the survey. But, you know, we, we could go through and see, was there anything that reached a step two where there was a happy ending?
Okay, um, we, we're going to have to make a decision one way or the other. Are we gonna, are we gonna punt? Are we gonna?
She froze.
Yeah. Is that a comment? Jeez, that's a, that's a bad look.
Well, I think she was calling us to decide if we're going to punt on this, you know, are we gonna take Scott's suggestion? Or are we going to, um, just wait? And I think that's the matter before us.
Right, so, sorry, my internet is-
Yeah, you just froze, so that's okay.
Yeah, I've been, I've been frozen off and on for the last ten minutes. So, okay, so, so what are we doing?
What, what do we do? Do a straw poll, act sooner versus act later? And I, I can live with either one, but.
I can do sooner or later, but either one has to be accompanied by some sort of rational, well, here's what we did about this. People think, we can't do that till later than I'm a later vote. But it's, it's sort of not necessarily a timing issue. It's more of a, how, how do we articulate a, he- here's how we're responding to feedback. And it could be a whole host of things we discussed today. So I, I, I could live with either. But the, if it's, if it's sooner, it also needs to be accompanied by, yeah.
Yeah.
If that revolves staff, that can't be sooner. So, and I think it does. So I just can't, staff can't make that commitment, given what they're facing right now with the rest of the school year.
I don't know, I, I just have the, the feeling that if I called up Keely and said, would you mind getting rid of that step? She'd say, oh, God. She'd say, oh, God, please get rid of it. End of conversation, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it would be, oh, you know, we need to meet as a senior leadership team to discuss that if it's but I don't get that impression, but.
I think it'll put a lot more pressure on the first responder because the the next appeal goes right to the board. And that's not a bad thing because I like we should land things.
I think it's a good thing and you know, why? If there isn't that pressure, then we're going to end up with a step to appeal and that's more time. And it's, oh, my God. You know, let's anyway, but if y'all want to wait. But I just have the feeling we could just do this and and get it done and and get it and tee it up, but okay.
It's what the that is to get done and you're talking about a narrow piece. And I think Julia is talking about broader pieces. So and so that's the my my responses to the broader body of work that she wants to come through together. And you're talking about a more narrow scope work, I think I want to clarify my response.
Why? I mean, the only thing at all in that survey that was relevant to the policy was the timeliness piece. And I thought, Julia, what Julia said, let's make this one change responded to that. And so I thought that would be a good done. But again, I'll stop. We got work to do. If you want to wait, we'll wait. At some point, it's like, let's just get it done.
I'm sort of there. I'm I've been going in and out. I've been catching bits and pieces. I think what I heard is a consensus that we probably want to ask some more questions. And and therefore that would given the press of other business. We that probably means we need to wait. Is that? Did I get the sense of the room? Have we heard from the student representative?
No, we have not, Jackson.
I honestly don't really care that much. Surprisingly, yeah. I I think it's worth considering the step to appeal getting removed. I'm a little confused about what the sooner or later, I think we might be a little different about that. But I think just pushing it back would be fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So so I think given the realities, we just need to acknowledge that it under the current circumstances, I think it's highly likely that if we table this, if we pause this now, we're we're talking about, we're going to return to this next fall. So what I'm going to report back to S L T is that when the new structure is in place and the positions have been hired and there and we are through the school year, that putting together a summary for this committee of the crosswalk between the survey results and staff action, you will have that to present along with whatever policy changes you want to make. I think that's what I've heard. And that's much of Julia's perspective. That's broader than what Scott said, but I think that's what has just been articulated.
Yeah, and I think it's not that you can't do some other things like put in the first response back like here's here's how long the process takes. So I mean, I wouldn't wait, I'm just looking at some of these other things.
Julie, I'm not suggesting that we don't make continuous improvement along the way. What I heard you say is the threshold you you for your perspective, the committee's threshold is a staff crosswalk of activities and improvements undertaken that crosswalk to the the survey results. That's the body of work along with hiring and getting into the new chief of staff structure or wherever it's going to go. It's in a temporary spot right now. That collection of things cannot happen before the end of the school year. Their continuous improvement can always happen and we can continue to make those incremental improvements. But we can't deliver to you a summary crosswalk of all the things until after the school year. I'm not trying to distinguish between different points of view and different strands within some points of view. Not sure I'm doing a very good job. Okay, so I'm going to defer a little because I was hearing bits and pieces, but that sounds like what I thought I heard. So Julie, if I'm wrong, I'm not I'm trying to summarize not.
Harry Potter where Rita, you're on what is that station number one that you just all of a sudden disappear into the into the train stations?
Oh, two and a half or eleven and a half, whatever it is.
Nine and three quarter, nine and four quarters.
Thank you, thank you.
All are a disgrace to Harry Potter fans.
Glad I was muted because suddenly my iTunes started playing.
Okay, all right, so so let's we got to move on. So I think I think the decision is we're going to pause this. We will wait to hear back from we'll wait to get the feedback from staff. And then this will probably be kicked to the next generation of the school board for some decision making. Okay? Okay, all right. So I would suggest that we take a break here. And maybe at some point my internet will calm down. So how about if we make it so it's five forty three? How about we give it seven minutes and meet back here at five fifty? Okay? All right, thank you. Move on to the policy that formerly was known as computer use. And now we're contemplating changing the title to responsible technology use. So my understanding is Dr. Travis Pocky is it's going to walk us through the changes.
Right. So let me see if I can present this real quick. All right, and can you see my screen? Excellent. All right, just kind of wanted to go quickly over what the what the changes are. So responsible, the responsible use policy replaces the computer use policy. And it's significant in terms of wording. But it doesn't really reflect a lot of operational change. That these are mostly things that we're doing today. There there really isn't a whole lot of additions as much as there are subtractions from the old policy. So while it may be a bit of semantics, we're focused on creating a responsible use policy. This move mimics a lot of the changes made by our peers in the Council of Great City Schools that moves away from a list of penalties and restrictions and more towards a code of conduct. And we really want this to serve as the framework for a series of administrative directives that we can use to address technologies and system changes more rapidly than just a revision of policy. So why are we focused on this change now? The policy was written at a time when there was a lot of assumptions made. The first assumption was that P P S owned computers were only issued to staff. Student computer use was in labs or via computer carts. Information and the services that would be accessed via those computers would be on the P P S network. And that the policy should encompass penalties and specific technologies. So this change also acknowledges that computer use is no longer so much as a tool, but is a bit of a societal foundation. And as such, we need to meet our legal obligations and ensure that our services are available for our staff, students and families. And that those tools are not used or abused to harm others. So in what was removed, the when it was authored, I T looked to that policy as a shield that could be used to direct the activity of technology use and implementation. It also looked at to technology as a scarce resource. Since then, we've moved towards programs where students have access to computing resources, accounts and other tools. Meanwhile, other districts have moved towards policies that more reflect that changing technology landscape. There's been a strong emphasis on computer use that benefited academic purpose and digital citizenship. In updating our policy, we remove things like definitions of I T terms. The policy should be in accessible language, but also refer to technology use at a higher level, leaving the specific systems and platforms for placement and administrative directives. We also removed guidance from specific laws. And what that prevents is the need to update the policy every time a new law is introduced or modified. System names were removed because those systems change at a speed that are really difficult for us to keep up with and and policy change just can't keep up with. And violations were removed from the policy itself. It was kind of a strange inclusion when when it was first drafted, but we have policies for staff violations. We have policies for student violations. We're simply just going to refer out to those policies rather than try and repeat that here. Another thing we removed was I T governance procedures. So there's a lot of things that were used in that policy that kind of tried to enforce technical controls where we really do have the technical means to do that today rather than try and force that via a policy. So things like that we tried to influence in the past were bring your own device policies. That really shouldn't be handled that way. We do have the ability to control what devices are on our network technically. So we don't need to put in a policy in place for that. What was added? So the vision for this new policy is to serve as that framework, like I mentioned, but we want to make sure that that's more agile. To do any of that, though, we need to be guided by a purpose. So the purpose is we want to provide technology with the idea that students are at the center. So we do so for the enhancement of learning and productivity. We also have a focus on equity and inclusive learning and ensure that our distributions prioritize our typically underserved communities. And we also want to focus all of our activity on on ensuring student safety. Responsible deployment and use is a section that guides us towards the creation of administrative directives for guidelines on acceptable use that include things like passwords and security, bringing your own device and others. And the next section focuses on fostering the safety and security of our users. The first carries over from previous policies by implication, but we're making it very succinct here. Where much like in the physical environment of a desk drawer or locker on P P S systems, you should have no expectation of privacy because those systems are monitored. The next is cyber bullying and anti harassment, which is a call out to the existing policy. Another is content filtering software. So we're required by law to filter pornography and harmful content, which is hate speech, gambling, violence and others. And we are releasing a tool which will also allow parents to filter out things that they may consider as wasting their students' time like YouTube or restricting the number of hours of use of a P P S tool. And that'll be out with our one to one rollout. And the last element refers to a shared approach in that we all have a part to play in ensuring the state safety of our safety and security of our users, both students and staff. So our community engagement plan is largely TBD. We will be definitely working to seek the input of principals and teachers. We'll also be looking to, and by the way, apologies for the typo that had gone into the board submission, but I did get it corrected here. So McKinney Bento, sorry about that. We'll be looking to students in the typically underserved communities, also looking to McKinney Bento and Title One, as well as parent surveys and incorporating that feedback as well. And we've also consulted with Nathaniel Schu as a part of this for a student perspective and will be seeking the input of the district student council. And that was all I had.
I had one comment about the technology resources and the no expectation of privacy. And I remember last year on the policy committee when we were talking about, I think it was our law enforcement policy. I believe that was I can't remember where it came up, but.
It was the search and seizure.
Search and seizure, yes, so it was the search and seizure policy. It was a shock to the students that were on the committee at that point to learn that, you know, the Wi Fi at school is monitored. So if they're on the Wi Fi and they're texting their friends or sending emails that that can be observed by P P S. And so I just think as this, I think it's really appropriate that it's in this policy and spell that so clearly. I think the continued conversation on something Maxine had talked about when she was the student rep was the student student like rights and and to remind students that that is not private when they are on the using the district technology. But I really appreciate that it's in this policy.
Absolutely, and we will be actually moving to place disclaimers on our login banners that do remind students of that as well.
So I actually had a question about this section as well, but from a little bit different standpoint. So when I read it's like, yeah, but what about privileged information, student records, employments or health related issues? Are we saying to people like you send something by email and like you don't have any right to expect privacy? Say you write something about a health related issue. Like, are you supposed to pick up the phone and call like I to me, it just seems like that's that's not a blanket.
You know, the the way I would approach it is from the perspective of we are, we are not necessarily going to go looking for private information. But in the course of doing our jobs and the systems, just by nature, capture this information. And it is entirely possible that we would run across something that you would rather not be there. So.
And there are other laws that we would prohibit the dissemination of information. For example, there's a lot of information that comes through the system about students. But F R P A prevents that information from going out anywhere without this specific permission of a parent. So and the same goes for attorney client privileged information. You know, things like that.
I think you want to think about what's the business of the district? So when when we have attorney client communications from district council inside the system to district clients, that is still very much protected by the attorney client privilege. But if I am consulting with my own private attorney and I do that on the district website, which would not be a good idea, I may have put that at risk. So protected information can come within the confines of the district's operations and it has a lot of protections. And if it's an individual who is using the system for personal use, it may probably has far fewer protections.
Yeah, I would just, I think we should at least acknowledge that there's like places where people can expect privacy because otherwise, like I would never send like an email about my child if there was some issue. If I read this like, hey, you have no expectation of privacy, even though I'm like, well, what about HIPAA?
It's the it's the it's the fact that the because this is a district server, all of this information is going through there. It's it's and again, it's a separate piece of what is going to be disseminated or possibly disseminated. But if you are, if you are using the district server and I'm using the wrong technology, the worst and the worst person would be talking about tech stuff. So I'm gonna let. Okay, excellent, old school. You know, when you turn on the Google, whatever. But we are required by law to monitor everything. It's not that it's disseminated, but under S I P A and C O P A, we are required to look at everything. And so that's where that expectation of privacy doesn't mean we're going to release it. It means that the department Travis's department is looking at every or has the capability. It's not that they are because there's too much information flowing through, but that they have the capability.
So I I think when you say there's no expectation of privacy, that could be interpreted as it's public.
Yeah, to me, this like it's.
So a refinement, can I finish? So a refinement of that to say it's subject to viewing by district staff. Or, you know, something along those lines to say, no, it's not that it's going to go out on our Facebook site. But any anything that happens through the district's network is monitored and may be viewed, and I'm not sure what view means again, by I T staff. Who are then sworn to secrecy around, you know, F R P A and HIPAA and all that stuff.
There are public public records requests are in play here, so.
So some of this is only subject to review in the normal course by district staff who has protocols and duties and gets fired if they don't adhere to those. But the, but, but there also are, I mean, emails that are pulled in public records request searches, they are rarely emails from students about their educational records, right? But, but I just, we see all sorts. So I don't want to over, I don't want to over minimize the staff. It's not just staff doing their jobs who may run across and monitor email.
So, I mean,
Go ahead, Scott.
So, so yeah, I, I think we, we should define more clearly who has access to what, under what conditions, that it's not strictly private.
We have access to all of it, however. I mean, that's the reality is there is, we, there is access to all of the information that comes through our system.
Right. So unfortunately, this is complex and I think we need to address the complexity for people to understand and then to feel secure that, oh, I, I can put this in an email and I know if I say something sensitive about my student, that it's not going to be publicly broadcast. It will be protected from a public records request, for example, and so on. But I, I think given those realities, I, I think we need to be pretty clear and specific about how this plays out.
Yeah, I agree because I, you know, I, maybe this was written like with a, to be directed at students, but I was thinking of cases where, and this is like, seems very real to me. Like somebody could have a, like a racial discrimination complaint about their supervisor and share it. Or a board member could send something sensitive to the superintendent. And like, if I send something to superintendent, I'm not expecting a bunch of other people to read it or use it somewhere else. So like, should I have no expectation of privacy? Is it a public record? Yes, in theory, that's the case. But I also think like, okay, I think information can be misused and I think there should be some, because not everybody has access to look at everybody's mail.
Very few people do. Very few people do.
Thank you. But, but, but it, we, you know, we had a lot of discussions around this with Nathaniel as well. It seemed to us to be more prudent to say you have no expectation of privacy. So that you then, as the user would be more prudent in looking at, do I, do I send that, that personal email through my PPS system when the, and we have, we have found this in, you know, sometimes there are public records requests that are rather broad. We had one two years ago where it was over 35,000 emails. Many of which, you know, you know, people were expressing personal opinions about things and probably wished, you know, they hadn't. But there are, they've done it on a public system. And so we thought it was more prudent to say you don't have an expectation in the hopes that if you were thinking, you know, to be careful because that's, it's also on the responsibility of the person using the system.
Well, then there needs to be some sort of mechanism where, I mean, I just view, and hey, I, I mean, I'll just say, I, I don't want everybody looking at my email. And if somebody has sent me something with a complaint about retaliation or some, something else, like, I don't think that, I guess, if, if somebody's going to be looking at it, I want to know like who it is and what criteria they would be passing along besides, hey, this looks interesting. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that happens, but I'm just saying this policy doesn't, is like a wide open, like no guidelines.
See, I don't, I, I feel like this policy follows the, the law, law about what it is to be a public institution and to use these resources. And I feel like, you know, I was very clear that when I got elected, any email I sent or any text was public, basically, if someone asked to look at it. So it's, I understand what you're saying about you don't want things about retaliation or very sensitive topics to get out. But I think that that's the exception rather than the rule. And we have systems in place, other laws that prevent that. My question.
What are the systems? That's what I want to know because.
I think Mary and Liz just outlined those by talking about FERPA and some of the HIPAA and some of those other pieces. My question for Dr., is it Paki?
Paki, yes.
Paki, yes, sorry. Is Paki, is, are we monitoring emails and texts and those kinds of things for, you know, I'm thinking about like Homeland Security for like chatter about like school shootings or anything like that. Are we doing any proactive monitoring or is it all just when a public's records request comes forward? That's when emails are monitored.
Only, only when those records requests come forward are we monitoring. Now there are capabilities within our current systems to look for sentiment analysis, something that may indicate harm or threats of harm. We do not have any of those enabled.
We, part of, what will be part of the administrative directive, and this was put together about a year and a, or so ago. If, if there is, for example, somebody has information about a threat being made, then there is a process, so it can't be anybody. You have to get approval on high to be able to look into a specific set of emails to see if there is, is an actual threat. If it's an actual threat to a school, then, and that sort of triggers our threat assessment. One example.
One thing that I think myself and maybe other students would find helpful is like, under what circumstances? Or how, or I guess it's hard to phrase, but like, when is the data subject to getting collected or tracked? Because I mean, like, just an example, if I have a window open and I'm signed into my PPS account, if I open a new window under my personal account and I'm doing stuff in there, is that getting tracked?
On your personal device?
Yes.
No.
If you're not using this PPS server?
If you're not using PPS hardware or accounts, I, I am not able to track you.
So if you're on the wifi, if you, if you're on your phone on the wifi, they can't, you can't track anything except for the PPS email.
No, if that's using the wifi, so that's, that's using a different type of tracking, but that is also monitored. So all of our outbound traffic is logged. Now the contents of it is usually encrypted and we don't have any ability to see that, nor, nor are we trying to. That's, that's really a lot of the, the systems are maintaining logs for troubleshooting and diagnostics. They're not necessarily to, to monitor for the activity or what the user is, is attempting to do at that time.
I just wanted to be clear about that, about what it, what, if you're on the wifi at school, it's a little different than if you're at home on your personal device, on other tabs while your emails open. But if you're at school on your personal device with other tabs open, there is some sort of record of that, although it is encrypted.
So I, I would support that we be more specific about when we're going to monitor because to me, like, I'm just uncomfortable with the district may monitor, intercept and review without further notice. Having been on like the other side of the district on some issues, not when I was a board member, like, and just some of the things I've been through as a board member, I'd like, who is the district and what are they monitoring? Like with what bias? What are they looking for? I mean, I, I think we should be more specific because to me, it looks like there could just be a major phishing expedition. I'm sorry.
Some of the monitoring required by both state and federal law. So we are, and that's for this, it's the, oh, Travis, what does SIPA stand for?
Children's Internet Protection Act.
Thank you. So we are required to do a certain amount by, and that's both federal and state law. Just go ahead, Travis.
Oh, and one, one of the other pieces to, to keep in mind also is that some of that monitoring is just inherent in the nature of how these systems operate. So I'm only going to know that you've got a virus on your machine if I have something on your machine monitoring for a virus. Now, if I go to service that machine and I find content on there that I didn't want to find or that you didn't want me to find, I may have to take action on it, but I was certainly wasn't looking for it. I was just monitoring for the presence of a virus.
So I, I would like us to take your feedback and return with some other examples, some additional legal analysis. We are getting close to creating a tangled web of process here that could have unintended consequences. I hear the concerns, but I think we need to bring back some additional information and recommendations incorporating what we've heard.
And I would just like to say that I fundamentally disagree with Julia on this one. I think it, that I like the language as it is, very clear, there is no expectation of privacy. And I think if you're using district email or district processes, you just need to know that. And that there are other ways to communicate, right? This is not saying there's no way to have these more private conversations. It's just not because of the legal ramifications of the use of this technology, there is no expectation of privacy. So if that helps in your analysis and coming back with new language, there's that.
I'm happy to come up with a lot of legal examples from my first three years on the board of places where I, I could see it's, if it's misuse, could be problematic. I have another issue about the language, not issue, but just question. Do we want to use digital citizenship as citizenship generally is being not used as often in in policies and laws?
Yes. I mean, that, that issue came up, there is a document that's already called, that's why it was referred to. It's when we moved to CDL, a document was created called digital citizenship. I, I think there was some conversation about changing that name. So we'll, we'll look into that.
Member or something, just.
Okay, can I, I, I think we've probably covered most of the critical areas for staff to wrestle with. Can I make one request, Liz? When you come back with mended language or any recommendations that you have and legal analysis, could you also include some like comparables? Could you give us some information about what comparable agencies and organizations are, are doing around this stuff? Because I, I mean, as, as a state employee, it was made crystal clear that if we were using a state state system or the state email or really state anything, there was no expectation of privacy.
We, we can provide comparator policies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I, I agree with, I think the intent here, which is to say, yeah, you don't have an expectation of privacy. I just want to see some ands. One of the ands being, we're not on a phishing expedition here. That doesn't happen. This kind of monitoring only happens in, from the district point of view, if under special circumstances, i.e. a potential threat. And there's protection for HIPAA and, you know, FERPA. So if you do put something in an email that is protected, it's not going to be released to the public. Or if that, if that's true, then we should state that specifically.
As I mentioned earlier, we, we were going to focus a lot of that more procedural stuff in the administrative directive, including, for example, when, when I mentioned the threat assessment, right? So that even for students, it, it can't be that, there, there needs to be a higher level of approval before anybody is going to go into anyone's email, right? Because it's a, so that was, that along with some other pieces of what it looks like as it rolls out, we, we thought would be better served in the administrative directive. Again, because of flexibility.
But this is a public document and if all the public sees is you have no privacy with, without any kind of explanation, then it'll look like we're, we're the NSA and we're listening to every, no, I mean, I mean, serious and, and that's, that's, I just want us to make clear, we're not the NSA.
I think, I think Liz's comment when she was trying to move us along, that, you know, staff has heard this, they've heard our concerns and our opinions and they'll bring us something back in the next iteration of language is a, is a good place to go from here.
Can I just throw in anonymous complaints in your thinking? You don't have to answer now, but like the staff mix.
Okay. We, we are, yes. I, 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 yes, and I want to think about that some more. And I also want to put the context of all that we do is not defined by this policy. In fact, there are significant constraints and expectations that come from public records laws, from FERPA, from due process rights. I mean, it is not as if it's the wild, wild west because it's not stated here in this policy. We have significant constraints. We also have significant protections and operations to run. So our goal in taking that back is to try to find that balance. So that when people are looking at, they understand if I want to send an information, I want to send an email to my teacher, my student's teacher, my child's teacher about concerns about their IEP, I, I need to know that that is protected. And I think that's a fair call out. It's also true that if the teacher forwards that email about an IEP to a parent educator and says something about it, that's also protected by FERPA, but it will not be protected from a records request from the parent's attorney six months later when there's a dispute about the IEP, right? So we're just, it's, it's to come up with, there, there are just a lot of different paths that we want to go down. And we don't want to give anyone the wrong impression either. So we want to be clear. So that's what I, my, my head is spinning with, how do we do that? And we do think this is our job. So we're going to go do that and come back and give you some options.
Great. Okay. Thank you. So we eagerly await. I, just, just so we know what we're, how long we're going to be awaiting, do you anticipate being able to come back with new language six weeks from now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And I was, closing comment. We're so rude sometimes. Dr. Paki and staff, thank you for your work on this. Thank you for dragging us into the 20th century. So totally, totally appreciate that. When I was looking at the red line and saw, oh, the old policy is completely gone.
I, I do want to call out
Thank you.
Travis and Mary and Nathaniel and one of our outside counsel and some other, I mean, there were a lot of people thinking about, what is the modern state of this look like? And I'm not one of them. So I'm here, you know, the backend thinking with you. These guys are the ones who've done all the work.
It clearly has been a ton of work. So thank you so much for that and for really trying to think about how we can, I love that it's moving from the punitive to this, how can we help support a culture of respect and responsibility? So thank you so much for just, I love when, you know, our policies begin to transition to these values we have about sort of respecting students and respecting staff and helping, helping coach people to success rather than a list of don'ts. So thank you for that incredible hard work you've all done on this policy.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we will move on now to public comment.
We have Cara Hasky here.
Thank you. My name is Cara Hasky, H A S K E Y. My pronouns are she, her. I am here tonight on behalf of a group of public school advocates that includes parents and teachers who believe our schools should be fully staffed in an equitable manner. We realize that there are many issues the district and board are currently working to address. But the discussion about the true impact of policy 7.10.30 dash P has been delayed for far too long. It is wrong to continue delaying. What we have heard in our many meetings with PTAs, local school foundation leaders, administrators and teachers is widespread support for more equitable funding that fully staffs all schools. Our community is ready for change. We have met with all but one of the PPS board members and all have agreed that now is the time to align our practices with our stated values. So in my written comments on behalf of our advocacy group, I included a recommended policy change to eliminate the practice of paying for public school FTE with private funding. We respectfully. We respectfully request that this be placed on the agenda at the next policy committee meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, did you send your email, your statement?
Yes, I just did uh, before I joined the meeting.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any additional public comment?
No, that concludes, it's like that.
Okay, all right. Um, so it is now six twenty-four. Um, our goal is to end by six thirty. Uh, we've um, achieved our goal with six minutes to spare. Um, so
More, I have another topic to bring up.
Yes, well, you can do it six weeks from now. How's that? So um, okay. So unless there's some burning issue that we need to deal with, um, I'm going to give you back six minutes. And thank you all for um, another lively and productive meeting. And um, just to remind you, our next meeting will be April nineteenth. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.